Called a meeting in order. In accordance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act, Section 30-4-8E, South Carolina Code 1987, I've amended all the media in the immediate area have been notified of the daytime location and agenda of our meeting. At this time, we will have a prayer offered up by Mr. Govan, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. Reed.
Step by hands. Father, here we come, as we know humbly how, to ask for your guidance, your direction, as we conduct the business of this school district. We ask that the decisions that we make would be in the best interest of our children and citizens of this county. And as we leave here, we ask for the members of our churches to be with us here. This will be asking your name.
I have the flag in the room behind me back here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Three seconds. He fixed that?
All that money we spent, we could've got a sound system.
Is there something we need to do to fix that?
I don't have any control over that.
And there's only a handful of us in here, so maybe we just need to turn speakers off. Let's just get out of here.
Okay, that works. New equipment, gotta work on. At this time, I'll ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
Madam Chair, make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No citizens' comments?
Okay. All right, so we'll move on to consent items, take these individually or together, the approval of the minutes from the June 6th Annual Board Retreat and June 10th Regular Meeting.
Madam Chair, if there's an objection, I would move that we accept all three.
All second?
All two?
All two.
Yep. Okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, the next regular scheduled Garnet County Board of Education meeting will be August 14th, 2023, at 6:00 PM here at the administrative office in this training room. And that will be, we will not have a work session for July, right? Okay, so our next meeting will be our regular board meeting that is scheduled for August 14th. And there's, our budget reports are attached. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Douglas? All right, so I'll turn it over to Dr. Newman for an update on our 2023-24 Strategic Plan focus areas.
Sure. And as we wrap up the school year, of course, we're in the summer season now, so it'll be a brief update for strategic plan goal areas. But as far as student success, we wrapped up our summer school programs in our middle schools and high schools and regular programs in our elementaries. The only ones that are still going on right now are summer reading camp for third graders, and those will continue for a couple more weeks. But pretty much the month of June is when we had our summer school. And again, that was for students for recovering, some credits, but also we allowed students to attend that wanted to enhance too. So it's something we've done for the past couple of years, we've been able to do with the ESER funding that we had. As far as staff excellence, we started our principal in-service week this week, so we are together from Monday today until Thursday with various professional development pieces today. Our principals were being trained on CPI, which you're gonna ask me, what is CPI? Does any of our principals wanna?
Crisis prevention.
There it is. And it's basically how to de-escalate with students and adults. But it's really good training. It's an all-day training that they experienced, and so we're glad to start off with that. And then for the next two days, it'll be the updates from the different departments, and then we'll end up with some professional development as well. We're doing some artificial intelligence training and discussions, kind of similar to what the board got at the retreat, a little bit more in-depth with our principals on that, what that's gonna look like as we embark on that as a school district. And then also as far as staff excellence, our teachers come back on the 25th. And so we will have professional development on the 26th, and then also on the 30th, which is when we have convocation that morning, and then there'll be professional development that afternoon. So that's the district PD. All the other time, teachers and staff will be in their buildings. As far as community engagement, we are finalizing our town hall meetings that are scheduled for July 23rd and 24th. We will talk about a lot of the initiatives in the school district with our public, specifically our work-based development programs that we have, but also any of the new programs like our GT program that we're starting with our elementary schools, and our new courses that we're offering for our middle schools as well. So we're looking forward to that, again, finalizing the times for that. They'll be, one of those will be in Hartsfield, at Hartsfield Middle School, and then the other one, I believe we're looking at St. John's for that. And so Hartsfield will be the 23rd, St. John's will be the 24th, the Darlington Area One. And then as far as financial efficiencies, our budget finally passed at the state level. The governor has vetoed a few items, and so the legislators can decide to come back or not by November, if they want to change anything with that. But at this point in time, we do have a budget in place at the state level. And I'm gonna talk a little bit about the, some provisos in my superintendent's update that are attached to the budget too. So I'll talk about that in just a few minutes. And of course, for Darlington County School District employees, there's a 3% raise, at least a 3% raise, plus a step increase for the employees in the district. So we're fortunate for the board allowing us to do that for employees. And that's everything on our strategic plan goal update.
Okay. So attached to the agenda is our Minority Business Enterprise Utilization Plan for '24-'25. I'll entertain a motion to approve that at this time.
Madam Chair, make a motion to approve.
Okay, second.
Second.
All in favor?
Basically the same thing as last year, right?
Yeah, we just update it each year.
Just updated a little bit.
We just update it each year.
Okay.
Any other discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, wow, we got here quick, didn't we? Woo, we flying through, board member input. Okay, we'll start over here with.
Superintendent's update.
Oh, I forget, you go twice. I forgot, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I knew that was too good to be true. All right, go again. We're gonna fix that.
Although I would be okay right now going to that based on some of these provisos.
We're gonna fix that.
Well, for my superintendent's update, you know, I did wanna mention that there'll be some model policies that will be coming down the pike that have to do with the change to expulsions and how parents have to be notified about expulsions and rights. We're waiting for the school board model policies on that, as well as the comprehensive health that they have, and the change in booster clubs too. There's been some changes in how the state is, you know, how they're handling booster clubs. Basically, they have to apply every year through the districts, and then there also can be some background checks on booster clubs. So those model policies will have, coming as soon as school boards has them ready for us. But more importantly is with the budget passing, there were several provisos, and those provisos are gonna impact not only Darlington County schools, but also schools across the state. And so just to kind of highlight, and I'll dig in a little bit more, is that in the increase in the teacher salary scale that they did at the state level, right, they increased the amount that their, for minimum and teacher salary schedule, they're also attached to that as a requirement for monthly reporting of fund balances. And so it's still an average, right? We still have an average, and, but it basically says that, you know, we have to be able to say what our fund balance is on average, which is really, it's what it is at the end of the year on average anyways, but that's just one of those provisos that was in there. This is a good one, the Safe Schools Initiative includes language to exclude enrolled 18-year-old students from having a gun locked in their car on campus. So remember, we've had this discussion when they talked about the concealed carry piece. And so the proviso says that, you know, no 18-year-old can have, you know, a firearm on campus in a car, and we were all concerned about that. So I'm glad that they put that in. Another one has to do with the teacher supplies. They increased the teacher supply reimbursement to $400. Each year, they've increased that a little bit more, so I'm glad to see that for teachers. You know, there's a, the bathroom proviso that talks about use of bathrooms and who can use bathrooms, given bathrooms. And then really, the big one that we are all gonna have to be dealing with pretty quickly is cellphone access and communication devices in schools. And so just to give a little feedback on this, the state superintendent, Ellen Weaver, had sent out surveys to teachers and parents, lots of different folks. And I think as we all know, overwhelmingly, people say cellphones are just out of control for our students. And it's not as much the cellphone as far as what's on the cellphones and the content and social media and things like that that are being accessed, and the time that they take away from instruction, right? Because if a student is on their cellphone, they're not paying attention to what the teacher's saying. And then, you know, just in general, socialization, having conversations with each other, even if it's at lunchtime. So, you know, the information that has passed in the proviso basically says that there will be no communication devices. So that means cellphones or anything that connects to the internet. So for example, watches, the smartwatches, all communication devices will not be allowed during the school day. And that is the proviso that has passed. And the State Department has been tasked with coming up with a policy, because this will be for all school districts across the state. And they are also supposed to come up with ways to enforce the policy for school districts, because that's been one of our concerns as superintendents and principals. You know, how do we enforce this? And what types of consequences are we looking at in, you know, in schools with 1,000 kids? And, you know, how do you, how do you task everybody with taking care of this? So thankfully, the State Department and Ellen Weaver says that they will be having something put together for us by August, and that the, for the State Board of Education meeting in August of this year. And then they talk about successful policies from across the state and country will provide insight on best practices to inform workable implementation that doesn't require teachers to play cellphone police each day. And that's what, that's what we want to make sure they don't, because that takes away from instruction as well. So again, we actually changed our policies a couple years ago to where they are not allowed in instructional spaces. And I think, for the most part, we've been pretty pleased with how that has worked out. And so at one time, they were considering that in the proviso was, well, is it, you know, not allowed in school period, or is it not allowed in instructional spaces? And they decided not allowed in school period.
So not allowed to have access to, is that the language?
I believe that's what it says in the proviso. I think it says something about access, because they were talking about the lawyers trying to define access.
Correct. So, and what they talk about is the policy, that's what they're looking at. So implement a policy adopted by the State Board of Education that prohibits access to personal electronic communication devices by students during the school day.
So they're not, it's not that they can't physically be there?
Correct.
They can't access it during?
Correct, so.
That's where they're headed.
All day.
Yep.
Right.
Breaks, recess, all day.
They can have it in their pocketbooks or whatever, but.
I mean, you're gonna, as a parent of teenagers, you're gonna get pushback from parents on this, big time.
Yep.
I'm just saying. So I'm just wondering, the August, is the state, we'll have to follow the state policy, that's the way the law is written, right?
Yep.
So the state gets to decide how it's written, it's not up to us. It'll be, the first reading will be at their board meeting in August. I'm assuming it's a policy, it has to be, goes through multiple levels of approval, so it'll have to have public comment?
Yep.
So if parents feel passionately about this, their outlet would be to use the public comment period at the State Board of Education?
Yes.
Process, through their process?
Absolutely.
Like we, because we're just gonna have to follow what they do. Is that, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
That is.
Well, you know, this issue's been kicked around for a while. The South Carolina School Board Association has been involved in that. The good news is, it takes the burden off of school boards, because the legislature, the General Assembly is saying, this is not the school boards. So from that standpoint, you know, my only concern is and has been, at what point, and I've asked Ellen Weaver this, do they plan to say this to the public? Because I think personally, the longer you wait, the worse it's gonna get. When you tell, if you wait till August and say, you can't bring school, think about this, we start school, end of July, first of August. So if they don't meet until after that, you're gonna tell a parent, you can't have a cellphone, your child cannot have a cellphone, when you've allowed them to have a cellphone for the last two weeks?
Well.
For the last week, you know what I'm saying?
Yep.
Well, so if it's first readings in August, this isn't gonna be, they're not gonna have guidance to us, and we're not gonna have something to be able to force and figure out how to do for a while, right? I mean, does the law say we have to start it within August?
Part of the proviso, and it's already on the budget that's passed, what does that mean for?
Yeah, what's the in-between? How do we handle it?
I don't see a second reading. I see where in collaboration, board members, parents for inclusion on the agenda for the next meeting in August '24. Successful policies from, well, if passed by the State Board of Education in August, the South Carolina Department of Education would then encourage local boards to include the adoption of the policy on their earliest possible board meeting, September, October, with the goal of the policy being fully implemented in every South Carolina school no later than January of 2025.
Okay, so we have, so the first semester will be the figuring it all out, and we won't be expected to implement it fully until January.
Right. But I think therein lies an issue though, because just as Mr. Govan was referring to, how do you allow it to be one-way for half the year, and then turn around and pull it back?
I understand that, but we can't try to make up or guess what they're gonna tell us we have to do for the first half, and then it's gonna create chaos, and then we, I think it'd be better to wait until we know, this is my opinion, just, you know, we can discuss it as a board, but, I mean, we need to, until we have clear guidance on what the expectation is, I don't want to be going all back and forth and all the schools trying to figure out, you know, I mean, it's gonna be, I think, yeah, anyway, I mean, it's not gonna be easy to do at any time, but I think we need to wait for the state's guidance. I mean, isn't there also some, is anybody challenging this?
I haven't heard it yet.
So what are we really waiting on? So we're waiting on them to tell us what the model policy is?
Right.
And what to do about discipline?
Right.
Are we, I mean, do they feel like this is not gonna pass? I mean, is there?
Cellphones are not gonna be allowed during the school day.
I thought they were gonna be in worship, let them start the school year with them and.
But the question is how? Like, you know, okay, they, can they have it, I mean, can they have it there for safety purposes, right? That's where parents are gonna, what parents are gonna, like, they wanna be able to check in on their kid, because we all know, we've had to check in on our kids in situations. We've all been there, if you're a parent, in recent times, there have been lockdowns where you wanna check in on your kid.
Yeah.
So can you have it there, but it just don't, you don't have access to it? You know, we've talked about these lock boxes where they can, like, put them in there, and, you know, are we gonna have to invest in infrastructure to enforce it? I mean, there's just a lot of questions. I don't, I don't think it's as simple as you just don't have it.
No, there's so much black and gray in this. I mean, from how you discipline with no direction, how we start out, how we end up, what you do today, what's considered or classified, is on body, on person, lockdown, not on, but I don't, you got too many variables. This is huge. I mean, it's, I think I gotta relax, sit back, and let's just watch it. I don't know that you can set anything in place. When they tell you, do the best you can, but I don't know how strong we can be the first year, really.
Right, right. And like I said, our principals are comfortable with what we have in place. Like, we've not, that's not been a big issue that we've had discussions about. A few years ago it was, it hasn't been since. But I think, you know, again, I think it's gonna be either way. I wish they had it today. Yeah. So we can start the school year off, and we can message to everybody. That would be so much easier to do, but.
Do you message with the same information we're getting, that it is highly likely that this is gonna, we ask you to please be thinking and be prepared?
Yep.
Just so that, we've been talking about it, people.
And I think we need to proactively let parents know too, because their only outlet is to go to the state.
Yeah, that's right.
If we wait until January, and they're like, surprised, they're gonna be like, well, board, we don't want this, and we'll be like, sorry, we can't do anything about it, it already passed at the state. If we want to give parents.
A voice.
A voice, then they need to know the process that they have to go through, and that's through the state, not through us.
That's right.
So I mean, I think it's fair to parents to go ahead and let them know, this is coming, here's the process you have to use, if you want your voice heard, because we have to follow whatever comes from the state.
So what, say, really in access to a device?
Shall implement a policy adopted by the state school board that prohibits access to personal electronic communication devices?
Personal, so it doesn't have any impact on our current, like iPads and MacBooks and that sort of thing?
No, because we can control all that.
So that says limits?
Prohibits.
Prohibits.
Yeah, prohibits.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are you saying, I mean, even as much as an Apple Watch?
I know, that's the one I heard, was the Apple Watch. I was like, that's gonna be a disaster.
That's right.
So many people, I mean, so many people have them. That alone is gonna be.
In my opinion, all we can do as a board is go ahead and make sure that you're starting this coming school year, make sure that our current policy that's already in place is fully implemented, enforced, because it clearly states right here where they're prohibited that, in red zones, and everything, it goes into description of what's considered a red zone and a green zone, well, we can change that the entire campus is considered a red zone.
I think that's what we're saying is, I mean, how do we know, I mean, there's so much, what, I don't know, we cause all that chaos, and then they don't pass it, or they change it at the board level, I mean, at the state level.
I think maybe implementing, like, reinforcing that we want what we already have in policy in place is okay, because it could, like, maybe give us a little, like, stepping stone toward, like, the idea of it, like, especially where it's maybe not as enforced as much as, you know, maybe get, get us, but I don't think we need to try to pass any additional policy till we hear from the state.
No, 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 no.
I mean, there's no way.
I would agree with that.
We just can't.
The key is though, what do we message at the beginning of the school year? I think that's really the issue that we have.
I think we need to make sure that they know that state is working on this.
I think the key is being honest and straight up with the parents, and letting them know what is gonna take place, and that it's in the process of being approved by the state board, and once they send down what each school district has to do, then we let the parents know as soon as possible.
I think right at the very beginning of the year, we need to let them know that state's working on this. Especially, we need to look at that timeline of that open, at the, at the, the.
State board.
The comment period.
Yeah.
Sorry, the open comment period for the state.
Some parents may not complain.
Well, I'm not saying, I'm just saying that we need to make sure that when we message it, that they still have, at least today, that they could get in there and make, because otherwise, it'll look like we're trying to pull something. You know what I mean? Like, we need to make sure we're just transparent as we can possibly be, and.
Go ahead and put it out there now.
Yeah, exactly. Just go ahead, yeah, do it.
Yeah, I agree.
ASAP.
I think that's what he's doing now, right?
Yeah, that's what he's, I mean.
Well, that's true, we could go ahead and start communicating.
This is the first messaging of it in public.
But Audrey could get something out on school connect or whatever you do.
Yep.
Yeah, and we can talk about, this has passed, there is going to be a policy that will be enforced, and that, you know, there is, you do have the opportunity to have a say in this, if you would like to have something to say at the state level, and we can find the information out to put out about that. But most importantly is that the proviso has passed that says cellphones or communication devices will not be allowed during.
And that, this was state legislators, you know, don't talk about provisos, because people don't know what that is.
Yeah.
Like, the state legislators passed this.
Yep.
The state board sets the policy. So, I mean, I can see it both ways as a parent and as a board member. I don't know that I have, I'd have to really sit down and think hard about how I feel about this, but I do believe in people's right to have their voice heard, and we just need to be transparent and open, and make sure people know exactly how this is working.
And, you know, we, there are districts around the state that have already passed policies saying the same thing. They've already, like, back in the springtime, and there's, I think it's Fort Mill and Rockhill, I think, have already had that in place for the whole year. So.
So there's some.
There's some.
Precedent to see, to look to?
To hear from, and, you know, how that has gone. And I, I will tell you, for the most part, it has been positive from the districts that have done it for the past year, and from districts that have done this around the country. So there are the concerns, and they're, and they have to be addressed, but for the most part, it has been a positive response overall.
Maybe we can share some of that too, in any communication that goes out, so that we don't freak people out either by, you know, we don't want them to panic.
Yep.
That we're gonna be reasonable about this as possible, and that there are positives.
Yep.
And there, there's districts that they can look to, to get some.
But I agree, as much as I wanna be able to say, you'll have access to your device, we just don't wanna see it. Well, but if the state board meeting, something else changes, I don't, I don't wanna say that, and then something changes at the state board meeting. So even, even though I think it would be pretty easy to say, look, it just needs to be out of sight, we just don't wanna see it. I think the details are gonna come from that state board policy. But we start messaging now before school. This is coming. This is the way, if you have any questions about it, or wanna have any input, that you can, and just know that at some point in time during this year, this will have to be enforced. So. Any other questions about the cellphone policy? All right. And then the other item that's not as much a proviso, but it's a law now, and that is the Uniform Procedure for Selection or Reconsideration of Instructional Materials, which has to do with what is allowed in our media centers and our classrooms, and what is the process that is in place if, for example, a book is challenged, right? We've all heard about the book challenges that have been around the state. Well, the state has taken that over, where it was, every district was responsible for that, and it could vary greatly across how districts were doing it. So now, their Regulation 43-170 aims to bring uniformity, transparency, and consistency to this process, ensuring it's pedagogically sound, legally defensible, and logistically feasible. And so, you know, the, of note, here are the things that we're responsible. Districts and their elected boards must take the following steps prior to August 1st. Maintain a complete and current list of catalog of all books and other materials available to students through any of the district's school libraries or media centers. So we have a system that does that. We have an electronic system that tracks all the books, everything that is purchased, anything that's currently in. anything that's currently in, um, and so we have that system in place. The second thing is review and if necessary, har- harmonize existing district instructional material review and challenge policies that the district wishes to maintain. Upon its effective date, the regula- regulation preempts, supersedes and replaces any district, local or school policy or practice to the extent that such policy or program is inconsistent with this regulation. So again, they're gonna be providing us, you know, what is that? Because the only way we're gonna know how ours compares to theirs is to see exactly what it is. We have a policy in place. It's in board policy, um, on, on how those are handled. But again, we're gonna have to see what theirs is in comparison. Additionally, districts should identify, designate and/or process to ensure that all new locally approved instructional materials comply with the definition of age and developmentally appropriate, uh, prior to being made available to students. Now that's, that's gonna be a little challenging because.
Isn't there, wasn't there already a board, state board that reviewed those materials? That's been, that's no longer?
No, they, they, they still, yeah. So this all goes through the state as far as the process now versus, even though they say you can have your own policy as long as it's equal to ours or more, right? So.
You can be as strict or more strict than the state.
Yep. And so, um, they talk about, you know, while the, the district board may delegate this task to staff and may request a report or recommendation from staff, compliance of new instructional materials is deemed advisable. The final responsibility for compliance with this obligation rests with the district board. Consider to what extent a preemptive review of ex- existing instructional materials is prudent. They basically say, you know, we're not required to review everything that we have in-house already. But, you know, again, the regulation allows for affirmative steps to ensure materials currently available comply with the regulation. And then develop a district-wide uniform process for parent or legal guardian to review a complete list of instructional materials in any given class, course or program upon reasonable request. Now that's gonna be, uh, a little bit more time consuming to put together. So.
So what, what was, so this is, this isn't the state law that legislators passed. This is the regulation that the state put through, through the state board.
Mm-hmm. It's regulation forty-three, one seventy.
Forty-three, one seventy, thank you. Where did they land on who can challenge that last piece you were talking about? Is parents and legal guardians?
Yeah, and, and so.
Because there was at one point like something about like anybody in the world could challenge or something. Like anybody of, that was a citizen of the United States or something.
That is, this is parent or legal guardian.
Okay.
Parent or legal, good point to bring up there, because that, that was all over the place at one time.
In the news, it's been all over too, so.
It's a parent or legal guardian and this, there'll be a state form that districts have to have available on their website that has to be utilized for that challenge. And that there is protocols in place that it can, it will go, at one time they were talking about it would go straight to the state. It actually will go through the district first. And then if without resolution, it could, if they were not satisfied with the resolution, it could go to the state. Now interestingly enough, if a district finds a book, um, that they don't deem should be in circulation, then that information goes to the state and it comes out of every district's circulation.
Yep.
So they're gonna, they're gonna have a warehouse, a catalog of books as they're challenged. And if they are, you know, if that challenge is, uh, found, you know, if they approve it, then it goes into a warehouse of books and every district in the state will have to.
Has to comply.
Yep.
So one person in the state could, I'm not gonna give anybody ideas. I'll be quiet.
So, um, again, this, it expired the, the time and so it, it is, it is now upon us that we have to enforce it. So I wanted to let you all know that that is out there. And so all of this information, we'll be talking with our principals about. Uh, we'll be talking about the cell phones. We'll be talking about what's the best way to handle this, you know, moving forward for the school year. And how we're gonna handle the instructional materials piece too. So, um, I just wanted to make sure to get it, get it out, uh, not only to our board for information, but to members of our, our public, parents, students, teachers, et cetera, everybody that's gonna have to deal with this. You know, as Ms. Gore said, be transparent, get it out as soon as possible so we can let people know what's going on.
When does school start then?
August first for students.
The twenty-fifth for teachers. So the, um, is that gonna regulation? So is there, there's gonna be more guidance or we have, we have to comply like right now with that? Or there's gonna be more guidance coming from the state on how to enforce that?
That I mentioned already, like the, you gotta have the.
Oh, right. We have to submit some stuff by August first.
Yeah, you gotta have the list. You gotta say, you know, we gotta have the catalog already, the, the electronic catalog, which we do refine. Review and, you know, existing, uh, policies and see what that looks like in comparison to what they have in place. We have to do that. You know, a- again, identify the process to make sure any new instructional materials are age and developmentally appropriate. And again, the other, they're, they're gonna have a form that they're gonna provide to us. We don't have that form yet. So once that's provided, we'll put that on our website.
Is this gonna require any additional people or resources or shifting of resources in order to handle it? Or is this sort of like we, we, we already had some process in place for this? So I mean, how much of it, of the existing process is gonna cover us well enough?
I, I think it's a time issue more than anything, especially when you're talking about, uh, classroom, um, materials, instructional materials. Because, you know, technically anything that could be put in a student's hand in a given class, right? Whether it be elementary or, you know, biology, um, you get, you know, we've gotta have, uh, uh, teachers have to have it and schools have to have it organized to where that information can be provided. That's gonna be time.
So we have the media centers.
Yep.
We don't necessarily have every, you know, early reader that a first grade teacher has brought in to their classroom. Or we do. Do, we do already have that or we don't?
What, I'm sorry?
Like the teacher's own library in their classroom?
They do, so.
They have to keep a.
For like elementary school?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, but, but again, I mean, can, think about all of the resources that are used for biology at high school, right? So, um, whether it be, you know, workbook materials, whether it be the textbook itself, whether it be, so anything that could be assigned, you know, we just have to make sure. And, and thankfully, because of, it can be electronically saved. You know, it's not like the days where we had notebooks with all that stuff in it, so. But we'll just have to be, you know, teachers will have to be pretty focused on, you know, what they say they're using, they use. And they can provide that at the request of a parent.
Where did the regulation end up with the part about teachers having to provide lesson plans to parents and stuff like that?
Lesson plans?
They were talking about like you could, at one point they were saying that you, the teachers would have to provide, like, I don't know if it was lesson plans, but it was like all the materi- the materials that they, their children were gonna review within thir- like thirty days in advance or something like that?
Well, that, that's what it's saying.
It's still in there?
Yeah, that's, it, it's saying that, you know, again, our teachers have to have that list of items that they're utilizing for instruction. And if a parent or, or guardian asks for it, they have to be able to provide it within thirty days. So, you know, that, that's what we've got to, the, the mindset has to go from, you know, as, as a teacher, I used to not have to think about everything being provided before, right? But I have to do that now. So now, I gotta make sure anything I'm using in instruction, that I'm starting off at the beginning of the semester with that list.
Uh, yeah, I thought you, I thought parents could review it thirty days before their child would see it.
Well.
There was something like you had to provide it thirty days before they, before the, so something about thirty days prior to.
At this point in time, that's not there.
Good, okay.
But, but again, what is there is that if it's asked for, we have to, we have to provide the information. Within thirty days.
Within thirty days. That's, that, I can, that's a little bit more palatable.
Yep. So stay tuned. Uh, I think all of these are requiring more guidance from the state department and from the state board. And we'll have more answers, you know, clearly in the next few weeks too. But we just want to make sure that we're talking about this, that, that our parents know about this, our students. And that our employees know about this as well, so our teachers and staff. So that is everything for my superintendent's update.
Now we'll make the board member input. We'll start with Mr. Morpheus.
I'm good.
Mr. Thompson?
I hadn't thought about it yet, but let's see. So, um, school's gonna be starting before we, uh, meet again. So, um, yeah, thank you all for, I hope you had a restful summer. I hope the principals and everybody that's working this summer, counselors were, uh, feel prepared and, um, supported and ready to start another school year. It's sort of strange to be saying, it still doesn't feel quite right with our short summers. But I do love it when we get those fall and winter breaks. But, um, and then also just, you know, you're, you've heard a lot about stuff coming down from the state. I think there was a whole lot of stuff that, uh, the state legislators, uh, moved through that impact our schools this past year. You know, I think most of us are active members of the South Carolina School Board Association, which is an association that supports public schools and we, they, they, I guess, I don't want to say they lobby for us, but they, they sort of lobby for us and, and represent public schools with the legislatures. And we're, we're trying to do what we can there. Um, and I would just say, you know, if you agree or disagree, I, I don't, not going there, but, um, if you, if you don't like what you see, make sure you're, you're using your voice and vote and talk to your state legislators so that they understand the reality of public schools. Because what they decide at the state, our hands become tied and the school board doesn't get the opportunity to adjust a lot of that. So that's what I would say about all the stuff that you're hearing that's coming through this year. So. And, um, and know, um, our staff, know that we'll, I know that you will, and everybody will work hard to try to make those changes as reasonable and, um, realistic and all those things as possible. So, and we'll support, I'm sure the district office is gonna be supporting. The school's trying to figure out how to, how to comply to some of the new, new things. So we're here to support you as best we can.
Mr. Jeffords?
Um, just like to welcome Mr. Leonard and new principal Lamar High School. Glad to have you here. Looking forward to working with you. Dr. Nichols, glad to have you here. Got some new hires. We're all excited about that. And Mr. Chuck, how many vacancies do we have now?
Very pleased to be off, to be able to offer the, the July Jeffords Report. We are fifteen vacancies today. You know, recruitment gets a lot more difficult during the summer, but that is about far. Fewest, fewest we've had in probably ten years to start the school year. We typically start around forty. Yeah, that's good. And that's because of what happened this spring. And, and our principals are just amazing cheerleaders for their own schools. There's, we've got some great recruiters in our schools. So hats off to them. Um, yeah, we're in good shape. You do. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. Gavion?
Uh, just a few things. One, just to remind you of the back of school events that are gonna be held the last week in August. There are several of those being scheduled, um, around the county. So I would suggest that you pay attention, expect your parents because of books and bags and all that kind of stuff that you give away during that time. I think the one in Hartsville, at Hartsville High, I believe, Corinna, twenty-sixth, Mr. Lewis?
It is the, no, sorry, it's the twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth.
He said August, but he means July. Is it July?
Yeah, July. And I saw something in the paper where they're having one in Southernville as well.
In where?
In Southernville. And, uh.
Mr. Govan, let me press, the twenty-fifth.
Okay.
July twenty-fifth.
July twenty-fifth in Hartsville.
Right. And there's another one, I think that.
Lamar has one, July twentieth, I believe.
And we're having one in Darlington as well. I'm taking a minute of the date off the top of my head.
It's coming Saturday.
Yep.
Okay. Did, where is the one that happened?
It's going through downtown.
At the square.
The square.
So in Darlington, this Saturday, there's one on the square.
So along the lines of, of what, um, has been said in reference to the latest legislative, um, abisos, the South Carolina School Board Association will be having its legislative, um, board, um, conference in December. And I would suggest that we as board members register to attend. Because that is one opportunity you have to have conversation with your legisla- with legislators. And we typically put people on that panel that are on the education committee from the senate and the house side. So you get a chance to talk to them one-on-one as, as well as during the, um, conference. I am in the process of preparing for a board retreat that will be held for the South Carolina School Boards Association. Dr. Lewin and I have had some conversation about that. As a matter of fact, I'll be in Columbia tomorrow and, uh, we're gonna be found, talking about planning that as well as, um, talking about the latest, I chair the legislative, um, conference for the, um, committee. So we'll, you'll be getting your information shortly about that as well. And that's it.
First of all, I would just like to welcome our new school district employees and welcome those who are in new positions and welcome those who have gotten promoted and transitioned to, to other job sites. And Dr. Leonard, principal of Lamar High and Ms. Govan at adult, Wanda Govan at adult ed. And Dr. Nichols, our new curriculum. And I thank Ms. Kendra Williams at Darlington Middle School. I'm pretty sure these are some very good employees and they're gonna do great jobs for us. Like to give a shout out to Rosenwald alumni for giving out ten scholarships throughout, um, the different schools. And I appreciate them, the Rosenwald Foundation for giving back to our community and helping our students further their education in college. And also in Hartsville, we have a Dr. Pastor Vera Davis, who has been a, a pioneer in that community for over fifty years. Her church has finally built their new, um, sanctuary and they have invited us to come for their ribbon cutting services. So if any of the board members, are we, if we're available to go on July thirteenth, twenty-twenty-four at ten o'clock, we should go and give her some support because she has given a lot to the Hartsville community. Also on July the twelfth, I'm celebrating my sixty-eighth birthday. I'll be celebrating my birthday and I don't know what my family has planned for me, but I'm grateful and thankful to be sixty-eight years old. And I can truly say God has been good to me. So I'll be sixty-eight years old this year. And what else I have to say? Oh, on the new legislations that's coming down and the new things that, that we're gonna have to do, change comes. So we, so we need to just, don't panic, you know, just remain calm and do what we always do, the right thing. So don't get, you know, um, this telephone, having cell phones in school has been an issue for a long time. So we know that it's gonna, a, a decision has to be made. There are some good points about it. There are maybe not some good points about it. But whatever it is, we're gonna abide by the law and we're gonna do what is right and what is best for this district. So there's no need to panic. It's, it's this change, cause change does come and change will happen. And there may be some other changes that are coming down on some things that I have been reading. been reading that may be coming down to the district. And some are hard. Some are hard decisions that we're gonna have to make. So, just know that we're gonna do what's right, and we're gonna stand with the... We have to follow the law. That is one of the most important things we have to do. We would not want us to be out of sync or out of line. So, there's no reason to panic about it. Let's just wait and see what happens. And then we'll go from there. Just wait and see what happens, and then we'll make a decision from that point on. And so, Ms... Your name, Ms. Nichols? Glad to have you, Ms. Nichols. And I'm looking for good things, and I hope under your leadership, we'll be able to work with the school report cards and keep the kids' scores going up. And I have confidence in you that you're gonna give us your best. That's all I have to say.
I'm good tonight.
And this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the personnel actions. Do you second?
Second.
Anybody opposed? No?
I recede for voting.
Okay. All right. So, all in favor? Uh, okay. You got that, Barbara? All right, this time, I'll entertain a motion to move into executive session.
Madam Carol, I'm moving to be going to executive session to discuss personnel contractual matters.
Do you second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, this time, we'll move into executive session.
Okay, all right, so we're returning from executive session. Mr. Reed made the motion, Mr. Govan made the second to return to public session. And there are no actions, no votes, nothing that we need to do as a result of executive session, so...
That will be in there.